Good evening, and welcome to this week's meeting of the Northern Board of Selectmen. Today is Thursday, July 26, 2018. Let the record show that four members are present. Mr. Steele is not available tonight. And we also have Tom Andrew, Michael Units. Hold your legions, please. Hold your legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Under licenses and permits, there is an application of Dan Woski from TPC of Boston for one day all alcohol license to be utilized at the TPC of Boston Golf Course 400 on Palmer Boulevard, Norton, Massachusetts, 02766, as follows. No Technology Championship Member Tent from 8/29/2018, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for a private party. Stipulation is details are required by the Chief of Police. Appropriate visible signage for true drink limit per person per service. Fire details as required and subject to passing required inspections. Intend a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Representing TPC?
Yes, I'm Sean, I'm Sean Whalen, the Food and Beverage Director. Good to see everybody again.
Yep. Okay, well, this is pretty much what we do every year.
Yes, sir.
We're going through the process.
Yes, sir.
Anyone have any questions, Sean? Looking forward to another, another strong weekend, hopefully.
Yes, absolutely. You know, the top 100 is usually what we see in terms of golfers, so it should be a great, great tournament and hopefully a great week with everybody also.
We're glad to hear that they're still considering coming back every other year.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not like no year at all.
Exactly.
Just a comment. I mean, not that, before we approve this, but has ever been any discussion of doing a woman's PGA up this part of the country or?
That is something probably that would be discussed at the PGA Tour Headquarters level. I know internally, we've probably talked at our club about it, but that's kind of decisions way above.
I was just thinking, on the off year, it would probably be nice to do something different.
Yeah.
If they decided.
Yeah, we've, yeah, we've talked about it internally, just, but that's, I wish we could write our schedule.
Different.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Second by Michael. Any further discussion? Standing on, Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Salvo?
Yes.
Mr. Bramwell?
Yes.
I two vote yes. We also have a second application, Dan Woski from TPC of Boston, for one day all alcohol license to be utilized at the TPC of Boston Golf Course 400 on Palmer Boulevard, Norton, Massachusetts, 02766, as follows. No Technology Championship, which will be at the Schuylkill 18th hole on August 30 to September 3rd, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for private parties. With a stipulation that details are required by the Chief of Police. Appropriate visible signage for a true drink limit per person per service. Fire details as required and subject to passing required inspections.
So moved.
We have a motion and second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Standing on, Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bramwell?
Yes.
Okay, you're all set?
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Very much. Have a good summer, have a good year.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an application for Fatima Watt for a one day beer and wine license to be utilized at the Everland Park on Saturday, August 4th, 2018, 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. for a private party. We have her application in the file. Been signed off by the various department heads. And it's a private party for 40 to 50 people. Anyone have any questions? Standing on, the Chair entertain a motion to approve the application for Fatima Watt for a one day beer and wine license to be utilized at the Everland Park on Saturday, August 4th, 2018, from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. for a private party?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Standing on, Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Salvo?
Yes.
Mr. Bramwell?
Yes.
I two vote yes. We have an application of Peter Gagny for a one day beer and wine license to be utilized at the Everland Park on Sunday, September 2nd, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for a private party. There is a stipulation that police daycare will be arranged at the Jackson. Motion?
Oh, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Standing on, Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bramwell?
Yes.
I two vote yes. We have an application of Heather Martin for a one day beer and wine license to be utilized at the Everland Park on Friday, August 10th, 2018, for a private party. Here's that everything is signed off. Private party of 40 from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Anyone have any questions?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
Second. Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Salvo?
Yes.
Mr. Bramwell?
Yes.
I two vote yes.
I'd just say something on that. You'll notice that's a Friday. We normally don't rent the pool out on Fridays, but this was booked a year ago, so with the previous Recreation Commission, so I just wanted to let you know that's why it's happening on a Friday, because we generally keep the pool open Monday through Friday.
Yeah, I didn't catch that. So that means that people in town, if they want to use, they can't use it. That's not, that's not a good idea.
Yep.
What time does the pool typically close?
Is it 6 o'clock?
Okay, so this is?
So it's 6 to 9, so it's not going to impact.
This is okay, so they will be able to use the pool?
Yeah.
During the day, okay, good, all right. I mean, after hours, I guess I wouldn't mind any day of the week, but you know, while the pool's open, Monday through Friday, the residents of Norton should be able, able to use if they want to use it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, I'm gonna skip around a bit. Next on the agenda, we have the, under old business, we have discussion on the South Coast Rail Route. Mr. Stefanelle is here tonight. He sent us some correspondence regarding the recent dialogue that the people are having regarding the rail, rail, the old rail program, so. Mr. Stefanelle, welcome today.
Thank you, and welcome. Ralph Stefanelle, your town representative for Serpide Southeastern Regional Planning and Development Corporation, which takes care of the whole Bristol County area plus. The article that was shared with you through Mike, which was sent along to Mike, was titled, "The South Coast Rail Is Headed In The Wrong Direction." And in that last night's meeting, 54 towns felt the same way. All that work that's been put into it, they're just... It's, one of the representatives at the meeting last night said, "It's the Big Dig times 12." And that's if they put a shovel in the ground. So you have that for your perusal. And are there any questions that you might have? Because I did have a talk with our past Serpide rep, Heather Graft, and the memo that I sent was simply eyes wide open to anybody as selectman and town manager. And she said, "Not to worry. It's not coming to Norton." So that's the good news. What they do with Middleborough, what they do with Stoughton, that's really not our problem. And I'd like to pass that along to you, so it's not something where you have to keep your eyes wide open. And if we have to, we will reengage Heather Graft. She'll put her armor on, and it'll be buried forever. But I just wanted to put you at ease for that. There's money of-
I think that's the reason why we're having a conversation tonight, because we're talking about the Edinburgh Route and they're talking about the Mansfield Route.
Right.
And why did you send the information you sent us. And we want to make it perfectly clear that we are not going to allow that to happen in Norton. We're not going to allow a fast-moving train to fly through our town, not stop, make any effort to stop. And I think as long as you can keep a surprise of what's going on, that's fine.
Absolutely.
I don't trust anyone on this, to be honest with you. And I think as long as, if any discussion about an alternate route through our town, we have to, we have to keep both eyes open, because-
Correct.
They can sneak up on you real fast.
Yes.
If I may?
Yep.
I was intrigued by the new Mansfield route.
Yeah.
Where basically, they want to run it down the median strip of 495, and then I guess veer off near the airport to pick up the old railroad right away where the bike trail is?
Which we're gonna use.
Well, but no, it won't, it won't be our part, because it's gonna be in Mansfield by then, so it's the part that's already, I believe Mansfield's already developed that part of it.
Well, they haven't developed a piece where, that's coming into Norton, but it is part of our plan to develop.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, it was intriguing, because I believe in here, or maybe someplace else, I read that this thing came out of, they pulled it out of a hat, like it had never even been considered before. And yeah, running up a highway median strip sounds great, but how do you get from a median strip to the tracks at the Mansfield Rail Station was kind of bewildering to. Although, thinking about it now, 495 does go right over the tracks in the Cabot Industrial Park, doesn't it? But, I mean, with all that development around that interchange, I just can't imagine how they would be able to do that.
Okay.
And elevations and-
When the feds put out a bucket of money, trust me, they can come up with committees. And that's not being negative, that's, this thing should have been dead and buried. Fall River is the only one who is for it. New Bedford's not interested, from the meeting last night. These are not my comments, but then again, I can't substantiate them, because I don't have the minutes in front of me, because the meeting was last night. So I'll hold on comments. I don't want to be negative. I just wanted to tell you that it's a boondoggle. I don't see how it's gonna happen. Headed in the wrong direction is the best headline they could have come up with. And it's not my headline, it's the Globe's headline. So when you then look at that headline, it's a grabber. And then when you read and you go, "Whoa, Stoughton, Middleborough," it's gonna take you, and then it just gets worse and worse as you continue to read. So it's a long ways off before this affects the town of Norton and the people who have worked very hard, besides Heather and her committee. They're gonna be around. That's, we're living longer, so, okay? There's no trains I don't see in the near future going through Norton.
I know there was a conversation way back about running it up 24 the same way.
Yeah.
Right up the median, you know, right up between the two highways. And it was looked at, but never really went anywhere. Are you gonna keep us advised?
Absolutely, it's-
Something sneaky going on, let us know?
Absolutely. Mike will, Mike will always get the data first, along with the Chairman of the Selectments Committee, will always get that data that's necessary to decision-making time. It's not something you hold back on. When we get it, it's gonna be passed along. It's too important a project for the region, not only Norton. Inside that, inside that report that you have, the last time I was at the microphone, I was telling you about the war room that's on the third floor of 88 Broad Street in Taunton. They have capability that Mike and I and Jeff Walker will be sharing, the capacity for drones, for picture-taking. It's, it's phenomenal, the technology that has been given to them, because A, they're, they're working with the feds, and that's a different source of funding. So there's a lot going on. There it is. I just wanted, I just wanted, I can get you copies, but it's not, you're not ready for this? But this is what each town can get and have and look at where the, if there's a conservation restriction, does that water, body of water, is it part of Taunton? So we make a decision on the Norton side, well, what about Taunton? If we decide to, to get rid of the weeds on our portion, well, how does it affect Taunton? This is the kind of technology that they have, it allows Taunton to collaborate with us. So instead of it being our funding, you put a collaboration together, and the funding goes down for both, and the problem can be solved. It's fun being on the committee at this stage. Are there any other questions that you might have for me?
How's the arm doing?
Pardon me?
How's your shoulder doing? Arm?
It's mending, that's about it.
If he gets out of line, Betty, just grab the arm, right?
Oh, what are you talking to, my daughter? Come on, you got to keep peace at home. Condyne Business Park, everyone is talking about in a positive way, how that was thought about, rezoned, committed at town meeting, and on its way to the point that Norton will be receiving the state's highest award. That's all I can tell you, because it's not out yet. They're looking at it at the end of August, the beginning of September. And it's gonna put Norton and its people who make these decisions on the map. It's a $3.7 million project. We look at it from our point of view, but it's giant, and it was done so well and buttoned up, protecting the water, making sure with the professional people that we have, making sure that there were no, all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted. And when the state made this award, and it's coming, it's gonna be a nice one.
Nice.
Something that we all earned. Our professionals here in Norton earned that award. I can't wait to see it.
Nice, very good.
There's no further questions. I want to thank you for taking it out of order, Bob, Mr. Chairman, and have a nice rest of summer.
All right, thanks, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Feel better, Ralph?
Thank you.
All right, I don't think I've skipped anything, Mike. Okay, have any other announcements, Mr. Salvo?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. We have Electronics Recycling Event, which will be Saturday, August 4th, at the St. Mary's Church, 1 Powell Street, Norton, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., accepting any and all electronics and appliances, including TVs, monitors, computers, printers, microwaves, ACs, washes, dryers, lawn mowers, and any other item that has a plug. Our costs are $5 each for computers, DVD players, laptops, miscellaneous electronics, et cetera; $10 each for microwave, small appliances, exercise equipment, grills, lawn mowers, and snow blowers, gas to be removed; $15 each for TVs under 19-inch, computer monitors, ACs, dehumidifiers; $20 each for washing machines, dryers, stoves, large appliances, TVs between 19-inch and 26-inch; $25 each for TVs between 27-inch and 31-inch, and large refrigerators; $30 each for TVs between 32-inch and 35-inch; $35 each for TVs over 36-inch; $40 each for projected TVs; no charge for cell phones, tablets, bikes, cars, trucks, batteries. Rain or shine, cash or check, zero landfill questions. Contact Jim Wood, JW Wood, JWood36@yahoo.com. And that'll be Saturday, August 4th, St. Mary's Church, 1 Powell Street, Norton, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Bramwell?
I have nothing.
Flaherty?
Nothing. Thank you.
And the new business, we have a review to vote to have Chairman Robert W. Kimball sign the letter addressed to Mark Seltzer, Community Development and Town Manager, Division of Community Services, Department of Housing and Community Development regarding the HCD monitoring of the Norton Fiscal Year 2013 CDF-DR Program Grant. Okay?
This is the grant that we have for the work being done at the Housing Authority. It's going through the town. And what, they did the audit, and they had a finding that we were hold, they don't want you to hold more than $10,000 at any one time. What we do is we get bills and we put in for reimbursement from the state, but they don't want you to have more than $10,000 in the account at any one time. And it was, so this letter is letting them know that we will monitor that. In the one instance that this happened, they were expecting a bill from the engineer in the amount of $11,000-something dollars, and they didn't send the bill in, and then they sent the bill in, and it was only $2,000-something dollars, not the 11. So from now on, they're gonna tell the contractors and the engineers they need to have the bills in, and they're not gonna get paid until they get the bills in, and then we'll do the reimbursement. It's the drawdown timing.
Anyone have any questions? Standing on, the Chair entertain a motion to allow Chairman to vote, sign the letter addressed to Mark Seltzer, Community Development, the manager.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Standing on others in favor?
Aye.
Post? That's unanimous, thank you. We have a discussion regarding a letter from Herb Sudan from VFW Post 8049, Norton, Mass, looking for five-plus acres of town-owned land for its project to provide housing for homeless veterans. I spoke to Herb the other day. I asked him to send us a letter, just to get him, get you guys familiar with what he's trying to do. And then what we can do is, can have him come in and explain the program to us and how it works. What it is, or what it sounds to be, is a program designed to assist veterans who are going through a tough time. Place to go to work out some details. It's monitored 24 hours a day, there's a number of different things. The federal government's offering some money, along with some other agencies, to provide, in this case, 24 units for homeless men and women who might need some help. What they're looking for from the town is whether or not we have five acres plus that we could maybe help them with, donate to the, to the cause. And I've been on this, all last winter, I spent the whole winter looking at tax, what calls properties, there's over 300 properties. I will say there are a couple on there. I have no idea if they're buildable or not. I have, I don't know if they're suitable or not, but he's just asking to come in and tell us the program, about the program. So with your permission, I'll have him come into the next meeting, and he can explain the whole process to us. Okay, Mike? Get him into the next one?
If I may, I have no problem having somebody come in for a worthwhile project such as this. I, but I would like to find out if we have the property available.
Yep.
Because I'd hate to have him come looking for something that we don't have.
Well, the other thing that may happen is he may be able to find, through his presentation, that maybe someone else there that has the land, that might work with him also on it.
Good point.
I will tell you, there's one five-acre parcel, and I'm not an expert, don't pretend to be, but I will tell you, I do believe it's buildable. There's at least one. So, we can look at it and see what they want to do. So if we can have him at the next agenda, on the next agenda, Mike, that would be great. Okay, we have a request from Paul L. Mission, Transportation Manager for Serpide, for permission to use the drone over the region in the town of Norton to highlight important transportation facilities, issues with those facilities and facilities that generate that traffic, commercial or industrial development, tourism, et cetera, while conducting aerial photography with respect to commencing work on an update of the fiscal year 2016 regional transportation plan. You have any about it?
This is just, as Ralph had mentioned this a little bit when he was up there, they're just gonna use drones to get imaging of the town, so that they can have it in their files anytime we need, we're doing work in town, or they're helping us out. So they know where different facilities are located around the town.
Do they have a date or a time when they're gonna be doing this?
They don't.
I mean, if we could get some information from them, and when they think they might be in the area, just to make people aware of it, I think that would be helpful. Not that everybody's gonna be aware of it, but at least we can try and make people aware of it.
So do you want me to just send them a letter that you're okay with it, and you want to know, you'd like to be informed?
Just, yeah, we're, my personal opinion is that we send a letter indicating that we give them mission, but we'd like them to notify us ahead of time, just so that if we get calls, we can tell people that Serpide-
Yeah.
...is serving.
Yeah. You know, people be looking up saying, "Who the heck's up there in the air photographing my property?"
Right.
You know, we're gonna get, we're gonna get those kind of calls, especially with public safety.
Exactly.
They should be made aware of it.
Right.
So when they get the calls and notes, and what to say. I mean, I'd probably even go one further and suggest maybe they put an advertisement in the local newspaper, but I don't know if it works anymore.
Privately.
If there's nothing else, we can put on our cable access.
Right, yeah. I think that it'd be a waste of their funds to advertise. I think as long as they can notify the town, so that the, the communications center is aware of it, so that when they get calls, they'll be able to tell people.
Cable access?
Yeah. It's probably about 30 drones in town already. Privately anyways. We don't want anybody shooting anything out of the sky.
Right.
Okay. So everybody, everybody okay with that request?
Yes.
Authorized Town Manager to sign the letter and get back to them, okay?
Make that into motion, or?
Yeah.
I move that we authorize the Town Manager to send a letter indicating our acceptance or approval of the drone plan.
Okay.
With the stipulation of letting us know ahead of time?
Yes, please.
Second.
Okay, the motion second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, okay? All right, right along. Town Manager's report?
You gotta do the town.
Vote to schedule a fall town meeting. You all have copies of the action required.
So the recommendation would be Monday, October 15th, at 7:00 o'clock at the Norton High School, and I don't know whether you want to say auditorium or gym, so I'll leave that.
Have them go to auditorium.
Yes.
I think the auditorium will be fine.
Okay. And so the warrant will open, will, it opens immediately, and we'll put and add facts to the newspaper on the 27th, and notify all departments that the warrant's open on the 27th. And articles will be accepted until 3:30 p.m. on August 23rd. And then the warrant will be sent to the Finance Committee Chair, the Moderator, and the Town Clerk on September 10th. And the last day to post the warrant is October 2nd. And then the warrant with Finance Committee recommendations, the last day, would be October 5th.
Anyone have any concerns, questions? Standing on, the Chair entertain a motion to vote to schedule the fall town meeting to be held on Monday, October 15th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. at the Norton High School Auditorium.
Excuse me, just one question, well, so moved.
Second.
Discussion.
The only question I have is, it's not Columbus Day, is it?
No.
No.
Columbus Day is 10, October 8th. October 8th.
I know it's just in October, I can't keep it strict.
Doesn't give us a lot.
Now, it wins the 31st, so it wouldn't be between the two. Okay. We have a motion second. Further discussion? Standing on others in favor?
Aye.
Post? That's unanimous, okay? Now we'll go on to Town Manager's report.
We have, I think you have in your packets, the cherry sheet, the updated cherry sheet. This is from the Conference Committee. I have an extra if you need it.
I know I have it, just in case.
So just to go over, you know, we never, we never, this is why we don't wait, obviously, till the final cherry sheet, because they're never ready before we finish our town meeting, not even before the fiscal year starts usually. So on the cherry sheet, the local aid estimates, if you look, you'll see that charter tuition reimbursement, that went up, I mean, excuse me, went down $9,236. The school choice receiving tuition went up $28,155. That's a direct pass-through to the school departments. That's a direct pass-through to the school department, so that doesn't count on our cherry sheet as revenue for the town as a whole. And the public library received an additional $145, and that's a direct pass-through to So in fact, on that page, we lose $9,236. The next page, down the bottom, everything stayed the same, except down the bottom, the school choice sending tuition, that increased $2,294, and charter school sending tuition increased $115. So overall, the total loss is $11,645 less than we anticipated. So the cherry sheet is never a huge determination of what our budget would be. That's why we try, we don't end the year, but town meeting in May with a zero for a balance, because we never know what's gonna happen. So at the end of town meeting, we had $37,000 available.
So we had the money, the extra money to cover this.
So this will reduce it to $25,902.
Anyone have any questions?
No.
It's pretty clear. Anybody?
I mean, I just wanted to recognize the work that Kathy Vonam, our outreach coordinator, is doing at the senior center. Estelle Flett sent me an email, she was, Estelle Flett, the veterans' agent. She was very appreciative of work that was done for her with one of her clients by Kathy Vonam. It was an emergency with one of the clients for the veterans' agent, and Kathy just stepped right in and helped out. The caretaker for the client was thrilled with the work that she did to help out with this individual. And, you know, she's only part-time, but great asset to the seniors in Norton. I'd like to thank her for that.
Very nice, Walter. And again, this is, Kathy is part-time, right?
She is, yeah.
How many hours does she work?
Kathy is 18 hours.
Well, again, it's an example of how everyone pulls together to make something happen in a positive manner, so this is great that she was able to do this. Very good. Anyone have any questions?
That's great. I think maybe it might be nice for the board to send a letter of thanks to Kathy for going above and beyond for this veteran.
What you got, Mike?
That's it.
That's it. Appointment resignations, we have the appointment of Thomas A. Watson as permanent full-time water sewer technician. This was an open position, it was open for quite a while, right?
Yeah, Tom has been serving, you know, on an interim basis, and he's been doing a great job, and the recommendation is to appoint him permanently. And one of the things I think you're missing with a lot of younger people today that Tom has is he's got a great knowledge, hands-on with equipment, and is a great asset to have someone like that, that's able to work on, work on mechanical equipment. Great, he has a great brain for that.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Seeing the chairman entertaining a motion, actually, we have to, you read that out?
Yeah, please. Excuse me. This time I'd like to read to the board of selectmen from Michael D. Unitz, town manager, dated July 24th, 2018. Regarding a notice of appointment of a full-time permanent water sewer technician, I hereby notify the board of selectmen that in accordance with the provisions of Article 4, Section 2B of the Norton Charter, acting in my capacity as appointing authority, I have appointed the following individual as a full-time permanent water sewer technician, Thomas A. Watson. Said appointment was made on July 24th, 2018. In accordance with provisions of Norton Charter, will be effective August 8, 2018, unless the board of selectmen votes to accept or reject the appointment prior to said date. Specifically request this board acceptance of this appointment with an effective date of July 30th, 2018.
Motion, we have a second.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? See any others in favor?
Aye.
Post. Unanimous. Selectmen report mail. Mr. Salvo?
I just have one question, you know, how are we doing with the streetlights? Have we heard from them yet?
You should ask. We've been on it this week, actually.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. The guy had been away for a while and finally got back to us and sent a contract that I sent a number of revisions back to him, and received it back last week, accepting the revisions. And now we're just waiting for our council to review the final, so we'll probably have it at the next meeting.
Nice.
They would like to get it done this fall. So they're eager to get going, we just have to make sure we have all of our documents in place before we go any further with it, but that's.
It was only one item, one item that they were contesting, but it may not be a big deal anyway.
Okay.
That's it.
That's, Flaherty?
I have nothing.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you.
The only thing I would like to recognize, the passing of a couple people, Ron Bonaski, longtime firefighter, did a lot for this town, and his sudden passing, to me, was a shock. I wasn't, I knew he wasn't well, but I was surprised he passed so fast. Ron is probably in my mind is best known as him and Charlie Stomay climbing up into the steeple of the church in the center of town by the common. And he got hit by lightning a few years ago.
It was 1993.
Right, '93. And he and Charlie were able to get up into the steeple and actually rebuild the yoke for the Paul Revere Bell, which is one of the few bells left that Paul Revere and his sons actually manufactured. And were able to make it workable again, and were able to ring it on our 300th anniversary the night of New Year's Eve that night. And I had the pleasure of ringing it myself. So it was a lot of hard work they did, and he did a lot of things for this community. He was a qualified fighter for many years, and be a great loss to the community. Tom DeLuca's wife, Teresa, passed away, and we sent our condolences out to her and to Kathy Van Dyne, who's his daughter, who works for us here in the tax collector's office. Couple of very solid community members that we're gonna miss, so. Okay.
I'd like to just send my condolences to the Bonaski family. I was out of town during the services and I wish I could have made their service, but Ronnie was very good to all of us. I learnt a lot when I joined the fire department back in the 80s with him, and, you know, he taught me everything that he needed to know in the younger days, so he was a good guy.
I think it's only right that, you know, he restored that old fire station, fire truck, and they carried his casket on the old fire truck down to the Plain, Timothy Plain Cemetery. So I had a chance to see that go by, but.
He can make you anything you wanted.
Yeah, he was amazing.
There wasn't nothing he couldn't make you.
Right, very talented.
Was there a wife?
He or Charlie, Stomay.
Yes, both of them.
Very, very, very glad that's. Okay, and the warrants in minutes, reporter Robert W. Kimball, following payroll and invoice warrants. Entertaining motion to approve the payroll warrant, PR 19-02, for the weekend in July 14th, 2018, warrant dated July 19, 2018, in the amount of $712,454.91.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? See any others in favor?
Aye.
Post. That's unanimous. Entertaining motion to approve invoice warrant, AP-190, I'm sorry, let me try this again. Approve invoice warrant, AP-19-03, dated July 19, 2018, in the amount of $270,124.45.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? See any others in favor?
Aye.
Post. Unanimous. Motion to approve the invoice warrant, AP-19-03S, dated July 20, 2018, in the amount of
So moved. Second.
We have a motion of second, any further discussion? See any others in favor?
Aye.
Post. Unanimous. Motion to approve the invoice warrant, AP-19-03S, dated July 20, 2018, in the amount of
So moved. Second.
We have a motion of second, any further discussion? See any others in favor?
Aye.
Post. That's unanimous. And we have entertaining motion to approve invoice warrant, AP-19-04, dated July 26, 2018, in the amount of $4,336,463.30.
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? What was the main part of that?
It seems like a big number.
Mike, do you know?
What was that?
That $4 million?
Was that the end of the year?
Yep.
Yeah. I know that they had a stack of bills come in at the end of the year.
They being?
The town accountant's office.
Yeah, there were quite a few that came through the stack. I have a picture of hers, the stack this tall in front of her, they, she was inundated with these expenses. And really, we have to come up with a better plan so that that doesn't happen.
Kind of like, you know, a lot to do at the end of the quarter for that office.
She was here till 7:00 o'clock on that Friday night.
I mean, it was ridiculous the amount of paperwork she had to go through. So we need to talk to all departments about making, doing a better job of that from now on. Okay. Were you a motion second, Alon?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, we have minutes to approve, July 27, 2017. Everyone had a chance to read them?
You hear that? Okay, that's a check.
As long as we got three of us to take a vote, I don't think you were here, right?
No.
Okay. So. Chairman entertaining motion to approve the minutes of July 27, 2017, as written.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in the second for a discussion. See any others in favor?
Aye.
We have one, three in favor, one present. And also, if you had a chance to read, motion to approve the minutes of December 14, 2017, as written. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? See any others in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Present.
One abstention. So we have three in favor and one abstention. The next meeting agenda is on August 8th, August 9th, 2018. Senator Feeney's gonna be here, an update? Well, Feeney will be here with an update, and treasure collector Catherine Van Dyne will be here regarding a vote to sign interim financing loans for the water treatment plant. We'll try to give you an update on the streetlights at that time, right?
Maybe. Yeah, close. Yeah.